Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Liria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, antithesis republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the Wednesday, January 29th, 2014, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Commissioner Williams has our dog today.
He wants to play.
It sounded like a growl.
Yeah, that's an sounding playful.
I had that happen once.
Well, if you got him up on his back legs, he'll probably growl. So, now this is a seven-month-old lab mix here. He was found out on Oberlin-Liria Road, in the Oberlin New Russia Township area. Now, seven-months-old lab mix, male, great dog, lot of energy. So if you got that New Year's resolution to lose weight, this is a dog for you because he's gonna probably take you for a walk, maybe even a jog. So come out to our kennel, take a look at this guy here, or one of our other great dogs that we have available. And you may have heard the growl, but earlier I was playing with him. He was a friendly dog, so he's ready for a home. Thank you. He's got a candy in the pocket.
He's got it in his pocket. What are you gonna give him?
I didn't know it was my dog, so I put the candy in my pocket.
Oh, so you gotta riled up then.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez isn't here today, but I'd like to call an executive session in regards to personnel matters and board appointments.
Okay.
Under the Crime Led, declare it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for criminal justice services under Section 307.45A 7 of the Revised Code for Support of the County Crime Drug Lab pursuant to Revised Code 5705.19LL and 5705.191 for .080 mils for five years to be on the May 6, 2014 primary ballot.
Before I make a motion on this, there's been a lot of discussion this week at the Prosecutor's Office and here, the Sheriff and through our county administrator, in regards to what's happening in regards to the crime lab and forensic urinalysis, in regards to the movement of Court of Common Police. My discussions with the county prosecutor have been to the degree that since there was a change in personnel and upcoming layoff out of forensic urinalysis, that we need to talk about who's going to certify our results in the crime lab. And Prosecutor Will, Chief Kavanaugh, probably some discussion points we'll do publicly here, and then I'll ask you to join us and exec to go through some of the processes that we've talked about. But they have basically asked us to consider extending the current crime lab director's employment on a temporary basis for up to 30 days while they finish a formal investigation, especially in regards that we do have the crime lab levy going on, and it's very important to law enforcement and keeping it moving. There's been discussions with sending it to other entities, but I probably will defer to you at this time. Dennis and Dennis.
Okay, first off, I had some brief discussions with Mr. Williams before the start of this, and I want to make sure that you understand what we're concerned about. The crime lab is essential to us fulfilling our function through law enforcement and prosecution. Just so you know, both he and I have been through shutting down the crime lab once before, when it was out to college and we had no money to operate it, and we couldn't get enough money to hire a director who would stay more than a month at a time. Okay, we eventually shut that down. We had to rely on BCI. As many of you know, the backlog at BCI became untendable. Now, I know they've talked about that that has been brought down, but I don't know if you saw the article in the paper just this week, the Ohio State Highway Patrol lab, they got their backlog down from six months to four months.
Is that BCI?
No, that's the crime lab for the State Highway Patrol. BCI, they're talking about that they have a three-week turnaround right now. Our people are telling us it's more like six to eight, and that's still good considering the number of cases that they do, okay? I know Mr. Cordez inquired to the Cuyahoga County Medical Examiner's Office, and they said for a fee of $175 a test, they would get it turned around in a week. Again, I don't want to sound disrespectful, but that's a pretty quick turnaround, and I'd find hard to believe that was gonna happen. And I told Mr. Cordez, if we get that, we need to get that guaranteed, because I've never seen that happen. But the bottom line is, we, right now, need the crime lab for any number of reasons, including the cases that are in the system. And I keep getting questioned by The Chronicle, by Brad Dick, and asking me questions about, well, what happened here, and how could this go on? Nobody has given me any facts. I have not seen one fact that says there was anything improper done at the crime lab. We have a system of tracking evidence. It's the chain of custody. We have it in every case, okay? That pertains to the processing and testing of the drugs that are sent there. Now, my understanding is from some very preliminary information we've got when we started this investigation, we just talked yesterday, both BCI came in and the Pharmacy Board come in. There are no reports. Nobody went, oh my God, there's a problem here, let's do something about it. Because I would hope they would tell us that if they found something. The problems that have arisen arise on the forensic side of the lab, which has been in effect and been ongoing for a lot longer than the crime lab. It has to do with probation, okay? And I realize that Mr. De León was performing two different functions here, but we have not seen any facts, myself or Captain Kavanaugh, or anything The Chronicle telegram has asked me, or anything that you or Mr. Cordez have asked me, to indicate that there is any problem at the crime lab. And the other assertions that have to do with these guns and these drugs and stuff like that, again, we have no reports. Nobody has given us any data, no specific factual information. So my only comment to you would be, we have not seen a problem with the crime lab, okay? If you decide to make a decision, as I told Mr. Williams, this is your decision. This is your bailiwick, okay? Whatever you decide, we're gonna have to live with one way or the other, and hopefully we're not gonna have to live with something that's bad. I would ask that you base that decision on facts, and that's what you've asked us to do, and that's what we're going to do. So, other than that, I don't know which more I can tell you. There's a lot of innuendo out there, there's a lot of assertions, there was no complete investigation done, okay? For whatever reason that was, whatever was ongoing was terminated when he decided to resign his position at the forensics lab. That doesn't answer any of our questions, as is out there in the public, and I've told Mr. Williams, he's absolutely right, this is not fair to the public. I believe you commented in the same way, Ms. Kowski. So we need to get this thing brought to some type of conclusion. Whatever decision you make is your decision, and I'm not trying to intrude on that. But it impacts us, and right now, we've been through this process before. We've had to scramble to deal with these type of problems before. If there's gonna be some type of a change, we need to do it in an orderly fashion, but I'd ask that you base it upon facts, and you've asked us to investigate that.
Right.
I think what they did, we give a 30-day, you've said that should be ample time to do a thorough investigation, especially in light of having a crime lab levy on the ballot. Last year, Dennis probably, Kavanaugh, Chief Kavanaugh, we passed the Drug Task Force, but if you are doing arrests and finding drugs, you need somebody to test them that would certify that they are illegal drugs. I'm assuming, is that how?
That is correct.
That's the process for the public to understand, that we need to continue these operations?
Right.
And if there is something that's not proper or not right, we've got that period that you will keep us informed if we can then find Plan B.
Absolutely, sure, absolutely. And I think it's very critical, and the prosecutor said it very well, but just going back to our fentanyl incident here just a few weeks ago where we had 24 overdose deaths, you know, I called the crime lab, and they got out right away for us and had that identified within 48 hours. If I'd have sent that to some other lab, that was not gonna happen. So it was very crucial to us in finding, you know, the targets, find out where it was originating, and identifying what it was. So it was very, very important. It's a very good function for all of us, and I speak for all the law enforcement entities in this county. They have something that available to you is very critical. Say there's a lot of manpower hours, and we have to travel to other areas, as well as the downtime, like the county prosecutor said. Our investigation, after the request was made, we just met with the county prosecutor yesterday, we have a couple guys assigned to that, and we're just now starting, okay? And we do not have any factual information to go on at this point. The crime lab, and like the prosecutor said, there's two different functions. There's this forensics lab and the crime lab, and right now, we don't have anything that says there's anything wrong at the crime lab, or in the forensics lab, with just the information that we've all read, you know, publicly. So, once we determine something, we can try to get that back to you very quick.
Commissioners, any questions?
No, I just want to reference the article that you brought up about the State Highway Patrol, and because of the increase in drug activity, that they've increased their manpower to like 27 people. So are, do we have enough staff going with our drug analysis since we have?
You talking about the crime lab?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, with its, it's always been a problem, I mean, for years. The crime lab is sometimes is growing bigger than what it can actually, you know, financially handle. I think if we focus on the duties and the needs for this community, you know, they can't do everything, and in order to do that, you would have to have a multimillion-dollar lab to do it. But the functions that it does perform on us are very vital, so I think staffing is something that can be looked at down the line.
All my discussions with Mr. Cordez have talked about, if we're successful with this levy with the support of law enforcement, of course, that we would work towards a certified crime lab drug analysis.
That's correct.
Versus what we currently have, which is an uncertified or non-certified product, but still allowable in the courts.
Absolutely.
Ted, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I spoke with these gentlemen earlier today, and I have great respect for Prosecutor Will, you've earned the respect of, I think, everyone in the county, along with the Sheriff being one of the most respected individuals in this county. And we need, we need a crime lab in this county. There's no doubt about it. The concern that I have, the individual involved, I think, has been put out there unfairly, and there's a lot of questions that the general public has. And with that, we do need the investigation. We need to find out what happened, and hopefully, it's something that, maybe it was a procedural issue, or nothing at all. And we can come to that, you said 30 days, to get that done. My concern is hiring an individual for this lab who is central of the investigation, what is that gonna do to the general public, as far as their perception of the county and the justice system, and also for us, our levy? And what I feel is we should go through and actually use either Cuyahoga County or BCI until the investigation is complete, all the details are out, and then move forward with our crime lab. And at this time, with this levy, it's unfortunate that everything did come out the way it is. I think it's going to hurt our chance of getting this passed, especially with early voting starting, and getting the communication out after the investigation is done.
Well, I mean, early voting won't start till the 1st of April. This investigation will be concluded by the end of February, and we'll have all the facts. I don't think it'll have much effect, or I think what they bring out from this investigation will clear up or show whatever the issues are might be at fault or no fault whatsoever. So I mean, that's, we've got that. At least it's a 90-day timeline, not the old 75 days, so we have some time to work on this, and then being totally transparent and open in showing the results to the press who have been all over this.
Well, my feeling is, because we're gonna be out there, we're gonna be talking the issues at all the functions that we attend, until we can get the answer, we really have, until we get the report, we have no answers. And my belief is we should delay this from going on, the ballot in May, until we have the report, and then take a look at putting it on afterwards, so we have a full period to go through and campaign, and show why we need it, without having any smoke around it, and that the general public understands that what comes out of the investigation, we can show it to them, we can talk about it, and then we can pass it, because this is needed. It's just unfortunate that it came out at this time.
Well, my concern, answer the Commissioner, is the need for the crime lab is extremely important to law enforcement, and as we've all talked about, the increased drug abuse going on in this community, I don't think it would be wise or show a role of leadership not putting it on, and with their report saying, here's what we need. If it comes out with a lot of wrongdoing, then we know things are being changed. But we have a 30-day opportunity or a window to look at all those issues, and I'm sure with the updates that the prosecutor and Sheriff's Department will give us in that investigation, we can look at, and then we're more than accountable to the public.
I just feel there's a lot of questions out there that need to be answered.
That's why I called for the investigation. That's why I talked to Prosecutor about getting an investigation.
And, you know, we need the investigation, and I've talked to the Kavanaugh and the Prosecutor about, everybody that knows Emmy likes them and respects them. And do we need to have someone, and I have full confidence in our Sheriff's Department, but to avoid any type of conflict, should we ask somebody else to come in and do the investigation?
You certainly have the right to do that, okay? With all due respect, so you understand the process, if you request BCI to come in and do it, it's not gonna be done in 30 days.
Right.
Okay? We're working on something that we requested them to do and it's been a year, okay? So just understand your timeline's gonna change. I can tell you, I don't have any concern, we investigate people all the time that we know. I've prosecuted people that I worked with, okay? So that's a function, if you don't want this job, then you should do something else for a living, okay? And I will continue to do my job.
So if you're looking to be popular, don't become a Commissioner.
That's a whole different matter. So the bottom line is, if that's what you choose to do, I'm not gonna be offended, but I can tell you that this is not something that is unreasonable, and we will do our job. And as far as, you are right, there's a lot of questions need to be answered. But as I told you when we talked before the start of the meeting, if you have one more piece of factual information than you had back when this started in November, then I haven't heard it, okay? The, the whole process has started back in November, when Mr. Cordez asked us about having, have to having the certification of the results, and we checked on him and said, no, you need somebody that has those credentials and that proficiency testing to do that. Well, nobody has come to me with any other information, okay, about the operation of the crime lab, okay, that says that anything was not done properly. When I was questioned by the media, I said, I am confident that the procedural safeguards and the actual forensic safeguards are in place there, because if they weren't, we'd have heard about it already. All of these drugs go through the criminal prosecution process and the defense attorneys. Now, I know that there's been noise from Defense Counsel that they're gonna challenge this. My answer is, go ahead. If you can show me something that's done improperly, then we will address it. But nobody has brought one piece of information to us, either from BCI that was brought in by the court, the Pharmacy Board, and we have had contact with them. So if there's information that we don't know about, then somebody should bring it forward. But I don't believe that the, the situation based upon the factual information has changed from back in November, and we were using Mr. De León to certify the results since then because we couldn't find anybody else that quickly, and it's not that easy to come across somebody. So my point is, is nothing has changed from there. We're trying to find out what the facts are, and we have agreed to do that investigation, and we will do it. So it's a matter of what you decide. The only thing is, it's gonna impact us, and whenever something's gonna impact us, I think it's fair to let you guys know, you know, that it's gonna cause some issues for us.
I have faith in Prosecutor's Office and Sheriff's Office to do a proper job, so I don't have an issue with that.
I just wanted to bring that up as far as, you know, the conflict, and like I said, I have all respect for you guys, and it wasn't to, it wasn't a slam against you. It's just a concern that I have.
It's a warranted concern, I'm glad you brought it up. Yeah, and I agree with the county prosecutor too. I understand your concerns, but we've done many internal investigations and have had to have wrestled around. Sometimes we've had outside agencies come in, but not all the time. It's not feasibly possible to do all that. I do not see any type of conflict with this. I believe the Sheriff's Office can conduct this investigation very well, myself.
I don't have a problem with you guys doing the investigation. I think we should let them do their job. And as far as the levy goes, I think the crime lab, the importance of the crime lab far outweigh whether it's a negative or positive outcome with the investigation. I think we need to let the residents know, if there is a problem, we're gonna fix it, but we have to have the crime lab levy on the ballot this, in May.
I agree.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Ms. Kowski, you made the motion?
No, I made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
No.
Undergoing acres, approve an intern service agreement, plant Moran, complete cost reports for Medicare and Medicaid for year ending 2013, it costs $6,500.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, advertise bids for copiers at Job and Family, notice being the Chronicle on February 3rd and 10th, and open at 2:30 on February 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorized purchase of an ID printer or software, maintenance agreement installation from Integrated Precision Systems, Inc., Twinsburg, and the Matinee Act to exceed $7,218. Authorized Director to execute on behalf of the Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Transit, declare it necessary to levy a tax in excess of 10 mil limitation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.19Q and 5705.191 shall be for the purpose of purchasing, acquiring, construction, enlarging, improving, equipping, repairing, maintaining, or operation of any combination of the foregoing county transit system pursuant to Section 306.01 to 306.13 of the Revised Code, or of making any payment to a Board of County Commissioners Operation and Transit System, or County Transit Board pursuant to Section 306.06 of the Revised Code for 0.65 mils for five years to be on the May 6, 2014 primary ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I really just wish they would make that a clearer resolution, so it wasn't near as confusing and duplicative of the wording. Jerry, is this how?
Well, there's two ways we can go, and this is the way it was on last time, so it's up to you.
No, that's fine, I just, I just wish there was a clearer way, and I know the Secretary of State's also determined the language.
Yeah, the only thing that they might take out is the revised codes like they did last time, but all the information has to be there.
Will be the same.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Tracy.
Is that okay with that one?
Yeah, go ahead, I just.
Okay. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
No.
Under the Engineer, authorized release of one-year maintenance bond for Mallard's Edge Subdivision Number One in Township. Subdivision was inspected by the engineer in Township and found no discrepancies.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Advertise for bids for various highway improvements, notice to be in the Journal on January 31st and February 7th, and open at 2:15 on February 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Ennis.
Commissioners, I do have one matter of pending, excuse me, of pending litigation I would like to discuss with you in executive session, and Ted, are we gonna talk about hiring and exec?
Yes, I have personnel.
Okay, so, well, we should say personnel hiring and board appointments.
Well, not necessarily hiring, Jerry, there are, there's a, there you go, pass it to Jerry. I mean, how do you want the language in regards to?
You were gonna talk to Dennis.
Personnel, correct, in regards to, with the crime lab, with the prosecutor and Chief Kavanaugh.
That would probably be a hiring.
Okay.
Well, let's just word.
Probably, right, that's why I'm not.
Let's just word it both hiring and board appointment, so we're covered, okay?
Okay, that's fine, I'll take that as a lead statement.
Commissioners' report?
Well, I had my Ohio Public Works Natural Resource Assistance Council meeting, and we approved two projects, one here in Lorraine County, Castle Reservation, and one in Medina County Park District. The one in Lorraine County was 461,000, and the one in Medina was 511,000, so it was, we raided them, and they, they all met our expectations, and those will be going forward. We do have an amount remaining of $735,000, so if there's property located in Lorraine County that we want to try to conserve, there's money available for purchase of that property. I had my 911 Review Committee meeting, which was a kind of a short and sweet meeting, and then emergency management, we were talking about a reverse 911 program or system. We're gonna have five companies come to, give us presentations, and hopefully, out of those five, we'll come up with a, a good system for letting people know what's going on in the county when we have an emergency, especially lately, we've had the water crisis, the gas crisis, below frigid temperature issues, so I'm looking forward to that. I've been asking for something like this for quite a long time, so if this goes forward, I'll be really happy about that. And my Goodwill Monthly Board meeting went well, still looking for additional donations, so if you're cleaning out your closets, drop it off at Goodwill, you get a text write-off for that. I don't know if, most of you probably know Linda Sandborn passed away.
Yes, she did.
She was an employee of ours, she retired. Very, very nice woman, really into dogs and animals, and so we kinda had that similarity in, also, my sister's birthday yesterday, and I meant to call her, I feel so bad, so hopefully she's gonna be watching, and, well, she does watch on a regular basis, so happy birthday, and I'll call you later today, so, end of my report.
She can't sleep, huh?
No, she can't sleep.
That's why she watches the meetings?
I think she just does it for the dogs. I don't think she, to watch us.
Yeah, busy week, just like to say thank you, though, to all of our Safety Force Emergency Personnel through the inclement weather and making sure the roads were safe, and we got out where we need to get out to. Again, spent a lot of time on crime lab issues, hoping to get that issue moved forward. Also, thank you to Ford Motor and the UAW team who worked together to save those jobs with the rotating schedules. Just a wonderful job with the leadership on both sides of that, so. Again, I'll ask for the, uh, executive session. Personnel board appointments, hiring, or considering hiring, and then whatever the prosecutor wants to talk to us about.
Uh, first of all, I want to give condolences to the sheriff's department. Uh, one for Tommy Pruitt that passed away unfortunately to cancer, and then also to Sheriff's Committee on the loss of his mother-in-law. I give my condolences and my prayers. The drug issue, um, I was out at Midview High School. Uh, our coroner, a member from our, uh, drug task force, they put on a forum out there. Excellent, uh, forum, educating people. I was happy to see so many high schoolers out there, um, actually listening and sharing some experience. And then there was an individual who spoke that, um, about losing his son and the, uh, prescription drugs and how he got addicted to it. A lot of people think, and we've hear a lot of this, well, if they're overdosing, let them die. At that event, we got to hear about an individual who was a good student, got his wisdom teeth pulled, and got addicted to the prescription drug, and then became a, um, heroin addict. This is an individual who served in the military, went away, got his life cleaned up, came back, and that addiction was still there, and they end up passing. We have a lot of, um, drug issues going on in this community. We have a lot of kids that are being infected or impacted by this. It's not just high school students. It's all the way down to fifth and sixth graders. So I just want to encourage everyone to make sure you talk to your kids about it. There's organizations out there that'll help you, um, learn the signs. But communication is definitely the most important part of it. It's a, not only a Lorraine County issue, state of Ohio, but it's all through the country. I just want to remind people that before you make the comments, let individuals die. Take a look at the pictures of those people before they became addicts, and then, um, make the comment on it, because these are some good people. And as the coroner stated, can't treat them as a, a criminal. They need to be treated more as a victim and treated through the process. So I just want to thank Midview for putting that on. Um, it was a great program, and, um, very touching to have that individual come out and share that story. On the, um, Saturday, I actually got to meet somebody from one of my favorite TV shows, uh, The Walking Dead. He was in Lorraine County, and.
Your favorite show?
It's my favorite show.
I've never even heard of it.
Um, everyone has to have a stress release.
That's right.
That's one of my favorite shows, you know? Fear the Living, Kill the Dead, as they say. But, um, he was here. He, he's from Tennessee. He was actually a South U graduate nineteen ninety-one. And he was up here for the, um, Ohio Hispanic Heritage, uh, group and doing a fundraiser. And his idea is to actually bring another movie here to be filmed, not The Walking Dead, but an independent faith-based film, um, to have it filmed here, and he wants to bring it back to Lorraine County because that's where he was born and raised, and, uh, he wants to make some, something good for happen for the county. So, um, we're in talks, got him in contact with some people who are invested in other, um, movies in the county. And just want to let people know that here's a local kid from South U High School that went through, lived this dream. He's been in multiple shows and, uh, um, waiting to see what happens on February ninth because he was shot in the last episode to see if he's going to continue. But, um, proud of Lorraine, proud of Lorraine County, and he's back here to try to make a difference, so. And then on, um, Saturday, I met with another group that's, uh, actually looking at doing something in my home city, Amherst, to improve it by, um, working with private donors and order to put a little park in downtown Amherst where people can gather, have ice cream and stuff like that, so. Just a great weekend to work with individuals who are proud of their community and want to make a difference, so. End of my report.
That's what it's all about.
Yeah.
Work correspondence?
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Looks like none. It's cold out. Nobody wanted to come visit us today except the regulars who have to. Would you like to make a motion to executive session?
I'll second.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.